Meeting at six P M on Wednesday, January eleventh, twenty twenty-three in the Sondi Middle High School gym. Adequate spacing during flu, RSV, and COVID season. Uh, call to order the roll call. We start on the far side with Tara Geer, please.
Tara Geer, Director of Student Services.
Patrick Horton, Principal of Sondi.
Sean Moynihan, Principal of Sondi Middle High School.
Megan Wade is the Stomach Principal of Sondi Middle High School.
Eddie Richardson, School Board.
Andy Nichols, School Board.
Scott Rickstein, School Board.
Do you want to call it out? Carrie, Carrie Claus, School Board.
Carrie Claus, School Board.
Jessica Tyler, School Board.
Russell Holden, Superintendent.
Kelly Russell, Possessive Russell.
Taylor Connor, Organizing.
Okay, thanks. If we could rise for.
Pleasurable legends.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, deliberative, and just as strong.
Uh, I'm gonna jump right into looking for approval for the board meeting minutes for December seventh, twenty twenty-two. Make a motion to approve the minutes of December seventh, twenty twenty-two, school board meeting. Ed, a hot second. I need a discussion, changes, commentary?
One thing.
Yeah.
Uh, in the thing that the, it was referencing the student trends.
Yeah.
The comment that I had, it said the following changes could be made, and then it's like, so it didn't change, but I asked for one.
Alright, let's catch up with that.
I think Tara did some feedback where Russ said. I think it was, it was just clarifying, if I'm not mistaken, I think it was clarifying the, the number of suicide, whether it was incidents versus people that were in the previous months.
It was, it was Carrie, and I apologize, because I actually wrote those in, but when I uploaded these today, I voted, I voted on them. I will go back.
Great. Thanks for that. Um, other, anything else? Someone's looking at me. Alright, so I'm gonna say we can. All in favor of, um, as noted, because we're just gonna fix this. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for that. Um, it's good, good attention. Thank you for that. Uh, looking for a motion to approve the, um, meeting minutes of A B C on December seventh, twenty twenty-two, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of A B C meeting December seventh, twenty-two.
Carrie, a second. Any discussion, commentary, correction? Alright, all in favor of approving the A B C minutes from December seventh, as noted, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Uh, agenda review. I don't have anything to add. I think it's a long road to this, uh, this evening when the board takes the budget from the admin. Uh, public forum in accordance with policy B E D H. You're welcome to the mic, introduce yourself, and where you live, and what's on your mind.
John Augustine, Nutting Roads. I'll just repeat what I've mentioned. We're in the budget for public comments, and it's told to be more appropriate to mention it here. So it, it feels like, from the outside, school activities have returned largely to normal, what they were pre-COVID. Field trips, sports, extracurriculars, eating in the cafeteria. But the one thing that hasn't gone back to the way it was, was the school board meetings that used to take place in the music room. And it, if you're willing to offer, next play, you still know why that is, that'd be interesting to know. Um, but also just, you know, the technology, as I mentioned, the town of Sondi adopted a streaming service, and the audio quality is very good, in my opinion, and there's an archive on the town website. You can go back and watch any meeting, whether it took place the night before or the year before. And all of this, just, to me, looks and feels very old-fashioned, given where the world is today, so. Typically, you don't answer questions. In this forum, where this budget forum is different. But, but that would be at least my comment, is that it feels to me like it's time to go back to the music room. You have space. This is the largest number of people from the public that have shown up in a long time. Plenty of room physically in that music room to accommodate all the people seated around the tables, as well as the members of the public. And if you're in that room, you could have, you know, a real streaming service, like the town of Sondi has adopted.
Thank you, John. Any others? I'm not gonna encourage or call names. You just wanna give the opportunity. Hearing none? Alright, thank you, John. You spoke for the entire public tonight. Uh, we're gonna have a presentation from the food service program, uh, Robert Fullerton.
So Rob's coming up for us. He's been up with us for three years. Um, Rob has done a great job coming and re-helping us redesign the menu. Rob came to us the year, for the year of COVID.
Year we done the ransomware.
Yeah.
It's all a fun start.
Left for ransomware, left for COVID. Love him for the job. Uh, Doug, he really did a phenomenal job during, uh, COVID, especially when we were out that first few months, uh, making sure that we had lunches, going out to kids, and going out to families. Uh, he works very closely with our adjustment counselor, our guidance department, making sure that food is available for kids when they need it, uh, and families need it. And created a nice online system for COVID, helped us spread out, helped people order online, and all that kind of new tech stuff, I guess. So Rob's coming tonight to talk to a little bit about the food service program.
Thanks, Russ. Appreciate that. Um, speaking of food, I got some chocolate chip cookies back here, guys. It's starting to be up a little bit.
Nice.
Just came out of the oven about an hour ago, so. Russ, appreciate the testimonials, but, uh, the first thing I wanna say is that any successes that I've had, or we've had here at the Sondi, Sondi School District, belongs to my staff. Uh, without them, nothing, nothing happens. And I mean that wholeheartedly, sincerely. Uh, I'll put them up against anybody else's table. So it's time to see them walk around town and say thank you very much, because they deserve all, all the accreditation, whatever you wanna call it, testimonials they can have. So what do we do with the food service thing? Well, the hardest thing to do with, with kids, any kids, especially K through twelve, such a variety of ages. Is try to get them to eat. Bottom line, just eat food, you know, get it, uh, help them get it for the day, help them standardize, so they learn, you know, all that stuff. How do we do that? Well, you identify what the kids want to eat, and there's two, so many different things, like the case, uh, kindergarten schools up to the fifth grade, they won't eat stuff, like there's mushrooms. If they don't know what it is, they ain't able to touch it. You don't have a hope if you know what to feed them. So you're trying to keep them basic, what they see at home, on T V, you know, mac and cheese, pizza, okay, stuff like that. And we've done that down here more often now than we did in the past, and it's different than up here. So it's kind of like an age-appropriate type of menu, okay? And what we did this year too, because a lot of times, if kids see something on the menu, they realize, oh, I don't want that. So this year instituted, uh, an option. If they don't like something, some kids don't like mac and cheese. I can't understand that, but they don't. So we have spaghetti, plain pasta, which, who doesn't like pasta at that age, with or without sauce. And it's proven to work. So the kids won't go hungry if they, you know, if they don't know what that is, don't know what spaghetti is, and they'll eat it, and problem solved. Uh, since COVID started, we had a hard time getting kids to eat different stuff, uh, for a lot of reasons. Supply chain issues, everything, everybody was out of stock, and I U N A, we still have a hard time getting cereal. I don't know why, but we do. So what we instituted issue too, we changed it, we put everything back in the cafeteria downstairs, and we offered them a variety of stuff. Instead of like COVID, everybody get the same thing, delude to the room, got boring. So now, uh, pre-COVID, when the kids were down in the cafeteria, we're having like eight or nine kids come down, that was it. Now we're about thirty-five, thirty-six. Pancakes, muffins, pop tarts, cereal, yogurts, wide variety of choices. So they start the day off, you know, with a full stomach, keep them energized, it's lunchtime. Up here, it's different, okay? We have the middle school, and then we have the high school. Now, the middle school, favorite, love Carrie. They're challenging. They're, they're not quite, they're, they're not that age where they wanna experiment, but they're not sure what. So we'll have something like today, but today's menu was meatloaf, okay? Put it in there, you know, mashed potatoes, gravy, or onion and onions. Not every sixth grader's gonna eat meatloaf, so we'll do something different. We'll throw in totally meat. Okay? Again, pasta, they love it. They ate it up, okay? The older kids, yeah, they'll eat it. It's cold out, sticks to your ribs, fills you up, so on and so forth. Uh, then we'll do another, we can also do another specialty thing, like, uh, get a little creative, like we'll do buffalo chicken salad soups, or what I call a Canadian dripwood soup. Ham, barbecue, pork, jalapenos, honey mustard, and good old-fashioned maple syrup. Bake it. I can't make enough of them. So those are the type of things that we do up here. Again, a little more age-appropriate, we get to the seniors, you know, a little more mauled, and they appreciate it more, more than just, you know, your basic cheeseburger. And we'll even take that a step forward. What we do sometimes is we'll start a, like a big condiment pile, like we build our own lettuce, onions, pickles, jalapenos, barbecue sauce, whatever, you know. It's like walking through a, uh, kinda like a sub shop type thing, you know, give them a variety of choices, or something, a little more than just stuff like that, okay? Uh, one of the things also we did this year is we created, um, we got the new T V monitor that's in the cafeteria. And it's right, it's the same thing that's online. So what that helps us, is if something comes in, we get out of stock, or something's ordered, we can immediately change it. And it changes immediately online too. So if you're looking, oh, okay, it's there. So there's no walking in and saying, well, we're supposed to have this today, but it's not there. Whatever the changes was, happens in real time. So there's no, you know, mom, I'm not adding my chicken nuggets, and that, or something like that. So it, it, it really helps us keep, uh, keep things true to, true to the menu, and the, the kids happy. Participation rate is, is, is really good up here. Uh, I'd like to see it a little bit more down the elementary school, but that's always a tough challenge, because you never know the, uh, kids being out, all the little kids get sick, so on and so forth. But other than that, the things, it's, it's going well. Um, another thing that we did this year is we got some nice soup cans that we put up front in, on the line up here. Sauce like the clam chow, big seller, you know, dollar fifty a cup. Kids ought to come, lunch, and buy another side of clam chow, or the crackers, so on and so forth. We'll be making chili, stuff like that. More suits as, as, as the time comes on. And it's a, it's a good thing too, because it's right up front, the kids see it. So they say, oh, I'll have some of that, you know? So helped to increase sales, I mean, in one aspect. Uh, another thing that we do too is we'll, we make chocolate chip cookies, pumpkin bars. Uh, we make a lot of this, all the stuff that we make, we'll make from scratch, you know, all the desserts, we'll make it, you know, we have a hundred fifty pounds of flour back there. Uh, pizza doughs, we make all the pizza doughs from scratch. Anything that we can make from scratch, we do. Uh, there's some stuff that you just can't get away from, uh, but most of the stuff we do is, is, is right from scratch. I mean, we're not gonna make chicken patties from scratch. It's just, it's just labor intensive, it just takes way too long. But everything you'll see, we'll, we'll, the girls will mark, make it, you know, to order as best you can for a hundred people. That's about it. And that's it, you know? Can't be questions and all that stuff. No, reach out to me. Uh, you know, I'll go by Gmail, you can all point at my email. But that's your time.
Thanks for feeding the staff and the students, and taking care of everybody, and navigating some interesting challenges in your tenure.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Alright, we have, um, superintendent update. We're gonna let Russ, uh, work the room, and we can, we can pick off another agenda item as well here. Uh, school board items. Uh, anything that, uh, board members are hearing, good, bad, ugly, indifferent?
It's been quiet.
Pretty quiet? Yeah, the, uh, multiple, um, budget meetings, advisory committee meetings tend to quell the, the crowd. We got some good questions tonight from that, which is great. Uh, but it's just, it shows how exciting, um, board service is, whether school or town, they're, they're in the same, they're in the same phase. I'm not hearing, I'm not hearing a little lot.
I would say that, you know, the budget meetings in November and December were very well attended by the board, and, you know, what we hear tonight is kind of a capstone of that, but there was a lot of very good discussion in those meetings, and again, very good board participation, so, you know, everyone's input's greatly appreciated. And it was our public meeting, so, you know, folks can attend those too.
Yeah, and I, the board, this board has exemplary attendance with all of the meetings, and I think it was good in the budget meeting, because we were able to have, I don't know, I think, um, I think it's okay to say it, if you're having a, if you're setting up a budget, multiple millions of dollars, taxpayers' money, it's, it's healthy and okay that there's some very different opinions, and there are some, I thought, very open discussion between the administration and the board, and between board members, to get to where we are. So I thought that was good, if we're not gonna say arguing, but just looking, agreeing, they look at things very differently, and meet in the middle for what's best for the community, then that's really healthy. So I thought of all the times I've been on, this is my, uh, my sixth one. Actually, that this year was the most genuine, meaningful conversation, and it's been a good, healthy process, public process. So I thought that was good in respect to the, um, administration for their inputs and challenges, pushing us a little bit to, to think differently. I thought that was really healthy, especially with all the different variables that they're dealing with, um, and the demands. Uh, thanks for the cookie delivery. That's pretty awesome. So when you hit your seat, you're up, Russ. I'm gonna follow school board topics done. You guys don't have a whole lot to say. You're up with your update?
Great.
You can have some cookie first, too, if you want.
That's right.
So nice to rest with us.
So I'm just gonna keep it short and sweet then.
Hmm.
Uh, we have a PD coming up on the seventeenth. Emily Daniels from Regularly Fox Room's coming in and giving a presentation to our staff in the morning. And then an open invitation to the community from six to seven here in the gym. Uh, Emily will be coming, speaking to parents and junior members regarding children, coming out of the pandemic, looking at dysregulation. Uh, a great opportunity to come, to come learn and listen, uh, her practice is based upon brain science, and how to help kids and yourself sort of de-activate or regulate to be able to continue to function and move forward in this. That's the case where we all live in. So that's on the seventeenth. Uh, on the eighteenth, as I mentioned, we have a strategic plan, committee, strategic planning committee meeting. Uh, and we're doing a SWOT analysis, with a strength, weakness, opportunity, and threat analysis. Um, and outside of that, I'll stop and move on.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna jump into, oop, I got carried away here, my reorganizing. The, um, action items. What's that? Oh, I jumped right by it. Sorry about that. I've, I've crossed out our student rep because he's sick, and I, chain kept on going. Thank you, Vice Chair. Sondi Elementary School, can I get an update?
Yep. A lot of things been going on at the elementary school. We celebrated our holiday concert, that being early December. Uh, the shore was once again filled with song. Our students did great, and bravo to our music teacher, Alex Agar. Uh, the Jingle Belt Blitz was organized by our outstanding T V teacher, Bonnie Screws, which was a large undertaking. Uh, the entire school came together inside of the shore and engaged in holiday activities. It was wonderful to see the same space again. Uh, the interactivity program started again yesterday. Uh, it's, it was wonderful to see the kids smiling on the slopes and a horseback riding with the two I got to. The community generously donated to support this program. We fundraised roughly about eight thousand dollars to go towards the cost of the program. And what did that mean? It meant that we covered the cost completely for our free and reused lunch count, students, which, as Russ alluded to, has increased over the years. Um, we also gave seventy-five dollars towards all participants' costs for skiing. Uh, and that was largely because of the generosity of Project Sondi and the Mount Sondi area ski club. Uh, very targeted money at J U S M A. Uh, but just, we have one anecdotal thing that our staff has noticed. We have a lot more red, red one groups than we've ever had before. Uh, just three years off, or two years off from going skiing, and we had six red groups per skiing. And I, it wasn't just kindergarteners and first graders who were highly interested in young kids. It was kids who were, uh, fifth graders, fourth graders, third graders. So just as we talk about our kids' experiences in school, and kids being behind academically, socially, emotionally, they are also behind in life experiences. And so to watch a fifth grader who was falling left and right, experiencing the thrills of gravity for the first time, was, uh, was quite charming. And she wasn't liking it for the first half hour. She said to me how much she disliked it when I was on my way with her horsemanship. And I was like, ah, come see me after, you'll, you'll report out differently. And she came and saw me at the end, she was like, that was the greatest thing I've ever done, and she's still on the little hill. So I can't wait to see her on my figure out.
That's great.
Uh, we have four staff members who are attending a workshop on multi-tiered systems support right now, myself, Tara, eight of our school psychologists, and Jessica White, our literacy coach. M T S S is the acronym that we go by in education, is a system of thoughtful use of resources so that all students can succeed in and path away. Managing our resources, being able to identify students who need support, providing professional development to our staff as we see needs arise, and being able to be as responsive as we can. It comes out of the acronym that we're all familiar with from No Child Left Behind, R T I. And it's just basically, R T I is up for, but a little more, R T I on steroids. It's a way of building community so that we can support all students. Um, we're actively engaging in that work. I look forward to being able to report out on some of that work by the end of the year, just where we're at, where we're going, because it's one of my biggest passions, one of my drivers to being a school leader and a principal, and to engage in this work. This is where I'm gonna really be able to hopefully shine, and be able to bring a, a little value to, to problem here. So I'm excited to work with our team and just get to work on this.
Nice. Sounds like you're pretty wide open and going for it in December, so it's nice to hear. And it's fun to hear with the skiing program, because I'm, being a parent and moving here when our son was in fourth grade, that's how we met a lot of people. So it's good for the students to get away from, um, being around just at home, which is the reality of COVID still, that there's, it's limited. It's also great for the staff and the parents and the volunteers to build community. So it's neat to, to hear that thriving and that you're able to cover the thousand dollars raised. It's a great Sondi story. Middle High School update, please.
Uh, the elementary school is a little ahead of us on the holiday concert, but we were able to have our holiday concert last night. I appreciate Mrs. Reed, uh, picking up, uh, the rope as she often does, and, and, uh, helped make sure that went off successfully. Uh, highlight, you know, each year is our winter workshop, so, uh, before Christmas, uh, we were able to do our winter workshops. No snow day, as we had a couple of years ago, so, uh, things like the iron chef competition, ping pong competition, we're able to go on as if they have in previous years. Uh, we're getting busy now, is, is the students are getting, high school students in particular, midterm start Friday, so we'll go Friday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then start the second semester courses. And, uh, you know, we'll get auditions for spring musical this week. We've got a book club going, um, where we get ten students involved. Our chess club is meeting on Thursdays. So students are still very involved, but, uh, you know, it'll, it'll take a little, little bit of a pause, hopefully, to study next week, and then get geared up for their second semester.
That's great. Anything you wanna add, or Carrie, anything you wanna add? Good? Get in the shakes. Getting the catcher's, catcher's knot. Nope, don't, don't throw it in here. Uh, alright, well, I appreciate it. There's a lot of really good stuff going on. There's a lot of bad news in the world, and it's nice to get a flood of progress, staying the course, and maybe overachieving a little bit. It's wonderful. Uh, action items. Looking for a motion to appoint Jen Korea as school district clerk?
I'll make a motion to appoint Jen Korea as school district clerk.
Second it? Any commentary?
Just very quickly, so no one was appointed by election process, according to, uh, say, six, seven, eight, one, thirty-three, uh, post-election procedures, the board has the right to appoint, uh, three, seven, the judge, she said she'd be happy to do. She's done it.
Yeah. Big thank you to Jen Korea. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thanks for that. Um, looking for a motion to approve, uh, motion to accept the proposed twenty-three, twenty-four A B C advisory budget committee report?
Make a motion to accept the proposed twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four A B C report.
I'll second Ed's motion.
Discussion? Kind of already talked about it, but, uh, anything to add? One more plug, it's a healthy process, democracy in action in a small town. All in favor of accepting, uh, the A B C report as proposed, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Uh, looking for a motion to approve the proposed twenty-three, twenty-four school district budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school district budget.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ed and Carrie. We've already talked about it for an hour. If you wanna add any additional color or commentary? Tunes, hums, singalongs? Alright. All in favor of approving the proposed twenty-three, twenty-four school district budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Looking for a motion to approve the proposed twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school district default budget.
I'll make a motion to approve, approve the proposed twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school district default budget.
I'll second Carrie's motion.
Uh, burning need for further discussion? All in favor of accepting the budget, uh, the district default budget, as noted, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Round and third headed for home. I'm looking for a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four warrant articles.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four warrant articles.
I'll second.
Second by Carrie. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, Sondi Elementary School project update. Got a partial from, uh, Russ in his update. Uh, C I P, wanna share their thoughts?
I'm sure we're, uh, we're still unfortunately missing a few key pieces to get the biomass plant running, biggest one being the, uh, the silo. We keep getting a little bit of, you know, runaround from the production people, that, you know, hopefully we'll get it next week. At least ship next week. But, um, we also are missing some electrical, uh, switchgear, covers, uh, so we can't switch everything over to the Sherburne yet either. The, uh, punch list they're working on, uh, most, I think all of the pipe insulation, which is great, that's all done. I think all the ceiling tiles that have been fixed, the floors are in. Uh, there's a few items left that they are going to try to clean up over February break. And hopefully, we'll have a better update next month on where we stand with the, with the parts that we're missing.
I can't really add anything, as you know, I think.
Yeah.
We did, we've done so well, getting as far as we did with the project before hitting supply chain issues, and now we just kind of fall victim to that with a few really key pieces that need to come together to tie the bow on it all, but.
Right.
Um, I think, you know, Brian that's managing this for us is doing everything that he can to stay on top of the suppliers, and, you know, Brian going and sitting outside their door. I don't know that we can do a whole lot more, so we're just anxiously waiting.
Yeah, it's been amazing how this is where, this is, you know, it's painful and disruptive and inconvenient, annoying list, but to have everything else functioning so well, and to have a dual source, with one of the sources of heat not getting shipped.
I will say that they, they have done some fine tuning on the propane boilers, which is burning up to a hundred percent now. We had a couple of small issues. One of them was an undersized propane regulator, which was kind of tripping a few defaults on the system. Uh, but now they've reprogrammed it, got it up to running at a hundred percent, and from what I understand, um, the school has never been so comfortable.
Yeah.
That's good news. And the teachers actually have their own thermostats in their room. They're not, you know, they obviously can't, there's defaults set in, but only can't make it into a sauna, but, I mean, they've never had that luxury of being able to say, oh my God, it's a little warm out there. You know, all the kids up there at the gym wanna burn it down a couple of years.
Sounds so modern and radical.
They had a pulchette.
The unfortunate thing is, we were really hoping we would have had a whole season's worth of data.
Yeah.
So one day, you know, to see the efficiency of the, of the biomass system, and what the savings really would be, and network, you know, by the time it's all installed, it's gonna be. Winter's not gonna be.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be a whole winter. It's not gonna be a full winter.
Yeah, and questions about the efficiency and the budget cost are perfectly reasonable and welcome, but I think it's, it, I certainly had the impression that when this is dialed in going full bore, you can see glaringly we'd be able to report some, uh.
Yeah, the other day, you'll have to look back in a couple of years when you actually have the data.
Exactly.
Yeah.
You know, one of the other benefits that, you know, we, we knew about it, but we didn't really know how it worked is we, we also get some energy credits from, from the federal government for, it, it's actually kind of funny how it works. But in layman's terms, the, the polluters of the world have to buy these clean energy credits. And they, and depending on how much we burn, they have to buy credits from us. So we actually get money for just burning biomass, because it's a cleaner fuel. You know, it's, it's a strange system, but, uh, we actually are gonna get a check every year just for burning biomass. Now, I wish we had more information on how much it would be. We don't know how much fuel we're gonna burn yet. We don't know what our credits were. But it'll be substantial.
Yeah, it'll come over time and we'll share with the community. But I appreciate it. Uh, thanks. I had one person ask about the old modulars and when they're coming out, and I, I understood from the guys that it, they're a usable space until the summer and then, then they'll go.
Well, that's the other issue, is that we can't switch over the modular until we get everything up and running.
Yeah. So I just said this summer.
It, it, it's likely now that it'd be a summer switch.
Okay, cool. Just to make sure messaging is consistent. Thanks for that. Thanks for hanging in there with the long-term project. Um, manifest, looking for a motion for all three APD manifests, please?
Make a motion for APD manifest number twelve, twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars, fifty-five cents. Number thirteen, ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars, twenty cents. And number fourteen, fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight and twenty-nine cents.
I'll second it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Man, let's thank you. Do round two on payroll?
Make a motion to approve payroll manifest number twelve, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. And number thirteen, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety cents.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Uh, agenda. Next night, next, uh, meeting, we'll just, uh, February first. We are, we are, we now have the budget. It's a usually a pretty short meeting. Um, you think about, we can talk about informally, you know, who wants to talk about what during deliberatives, so we can have a shared load, but that takes about five minutes usually if you don't come in already with something picked. So that's not a huge meeting.
It's not a huge meeting. And so just as you're looking at your calendars and voting at board meetings, again, stick with February first, the first Wednesday, then before the deliberative session on Monday, not an issue. Your next meeting though, I would, I think we may want to bump to, do you want to leave it the first or go to March eighth? Either one, the vote's gonna happen after, because the vote's late this year.
Yeah, I, I, I'm gonna hopefully be in Utah with my son on the first, and I have never missed a meeting in six years. So I'm voting for the eighth unless Scott wants to run the last one of the year. You can do it during vacation and I'll wrap up early.
I don't want to deprive you of your final.
No, let's, let's finish strong. Let's, let's see if that works for you guys. Let's, let's finish out the year.
That sounds good.
Because then if people want to come, it's more obvious for the public to come and tune in. Let's, I think it's just courteous in general. And it gives the staff, it's just not right to call admin, particularly teachers who are under vacation. Hey, why don't you come to work in the middle of your vacation? Because we're not very thoughtful and caring. So let's go with the eighth. Okay. Good with that?
Sure, thank you.
All right, um, making a most adjourned at six-thirty-four. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Good night, Son of the, thank you very much. Thanks for all the work on the budget from all the admin. Healthy process.